All right, I would like to call the meeting to order and if everyone can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance is in the name of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anyone understands what we're doing, the Vice President and President of Board are both absent so the school code says Madam Secretary takes over. So Ms. Custer's going to run the meeting.
Okay, so. Roll call, two are missing, Mr. Lindgren and Mr. Alexander. And next, we do. There was no exec session, executive session to announce, but right now we move into public comment. I don't have any. Any slips, but if there is anybody in the audience who would like to speak, you are welcome to. All right, now. Okay, it's all yours, mine won't turn on.
Good evening. Tonight, we'd like to honor the high school varsity football team. This year, the Falcons became the first team in the history of Potts Grove to win back-to-back PIAA District One Championships. This year's team finished with a record of 11 wins and two defeats, only losing to Perkioman Valley and Bethlehem Catholic, which was in the state playoffs. This group of seniors are graduating this spring, have compiled an overall record of 34 and 14 the past four years. Tonight also brings the end to the winningest coach in southeastern PA, Coach Penny Packer. And on behalf of the Board of Directors, I say congratulations for an outstanding championship season, an outstanding job, and an outstanding coaching career. At this time, we'd like Coach Penny Packer to come up to say a few words to address the board. Coach?
First, I'd like to thank all the football players for coming out here tonight and their families. We are very fortunate to have, to have been the district champions this year and as back-to-back district champions, as Dr. Shirk said. A lot of times, we go, have a lot of things happen to us during the football season and we're never able to come in here and explain a couple of things to you. But tonight, we want to come in and thank you for all you have done for us. We are one of the few schools in the area that does not have pay to play, and I think that's a direct reflection on the Potts Grove School Board. We, with the, all the uniforms and equipment that you give us, we thank you. But we also want to thank you for our district championship jackets that you purchased and also the plaques that you have gotten us. I know winning championships sometimes is expensive for you guys, but I hope that's an expense that you like to pay because we sure do like receiving them. I also want to thank my players. This group of kids back here are very special. I know when you said, "Does anybody want to speak?", half of them wanted to jump up in the air to say a few words, especially if Sean here. But not only are they good football players, but they're also very good citizens. And there are some things that these guys have done that not many people know about, like some, one of them won a citizenship award in the Pac-10 this year. Another one won a character award. One of our kids is a first-team All-State player, going to play in the Big 33 game. But all those things mean nothing to us unless it's a championship year. And it's really remarkably, remarkable to me that what can happen when everybody gets rid of their own agendas, gets rid of their own individual goals, and worries about one team goal. And that's what this kid, this group of kids did. They, there's a lot of them in here that probably felt like they could have caught the ball more, they could have run the ball more. But they gave those goals up in order to be, to have a team goal of winning a championship. So I'm very proud of them, I'm very proud of their parents. They're great kids, they're great citizens, they'll go on and become good citizens in our community. I have four players, four of my former players that coached with us, so we're very proud of our, our kids. And also, finally, before I let my kids come up here a little bit, I want to thank the school board. I see on the agenda tonight that you are going to approve one of my assistant coaches as the new head coach. He will be the third head coach in Potts Grove history. I think he'll do a great job. I think he will, you know, he will not be me, and I am not him. Don't judge him on, on me, and I'm sure not going to judge him on me. We're different styles of coaching, but he will get the job done and hopefully, we'll be back here next year, celebrating another district championship. I thank you, I thank you for all your support you've given me. It's going to be easy to leave knowing that we won our championship. Thank you.
Is this like a presidential thing?
Okay, once again, we want to thank the, our faculty football team for coming out tonight and taking the time to be with us. At this time, we're going to continue with item number five, the report of superintendent. And we ask Mr. Mortensen to please come up and our administrative director of the Western Center to present the 2018-19 budget.
Good evening, everyone, how are you? My name is Chris Mortensen. For those who haven't met me, I'm the administrative director at the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center. Tonight, I'm going to go over briefly our budget for the 18-19 school year. This presentation came out to you last night, I believe Dr. Shirk sent the copy over to you as well for you to review. But just some brief notes here in the beginning, just some of our successes over the last three years. Our enrollment has continued to increase since 2014. We've had much success on our NOCD exam, which is similar to a Keystone or a PSSA for career and technical education. We tend to be over the state and national average of, it's roughly about 86 percent. We're scoring in the 91, 96, 98 percents over the last three years. Our students have been very successful. Our rate of industry certifications has also increased and our students, almost every student leaves with approximately three industry-recognized certifications. And that's all due to the fact of everything that you've allowed us to provide our students in the classroom with the technology, the hands-on equipment, and all the training they have. And not only that, the fabulous staff that we have, we have a great team over at the Western Center. So I won't read all those to you, I'll just share those. You can feel free to peruse those, if you have questions, let me know. But moving into the budget, what are, what are processes for this? And I apologize that it shifted over there, Google Drive kind of shifts some letters, don't worry, Ashley, you're fine. So our process, we typically start in early September, the business manager, myself, meet with all the teachers, our student support staff, and ask for all of their wants, needs, and desires that they need, you know, to be successful in the coming year. We take all of that information, we review it. Obviously, some want more than others, and we have to understand that we want to keep within a budget, so we review all of those items. We go through them individually, we meet with teachers on items that are must-haves versus wants and needs. So we, we take a look at that. And then our biggest key factors are our personnel, that's, that's our largest increase every year. The CBA is a 2.95 percent increase, and that's based off of the five-year contract that they settled at the end of this past year. Increase in custodial wages, which is part of their contract. And the other staff increases are administrative and support staff, which are variable, those are determined at the end of the year. The other things that drive up costs for us are supplies. If you've been to the supermarket, you've seen the cost of food go up, it doesn't get any cheaper for us, even if we buy in bulk, unfortunately. Metals and consumables continue to grow up, go up, copper is continually more expensive when you're doing HVAC, electrical, all of those pieces, those costs go up. This year, we are very excited that our actual cost to increase to the districts, all three districts, is only $60,574 and is actually a decrease in the amount from Potts Grove of $15,547. I think we did a very good job financially, looking at what our needs were for the building and trying to be as fiscally sound as possible in the mindset of, you know, trying to keep down increases as best as possible. I know last year, we had a larger increase because we added staff, but because of, you know, we had some, you know, staff that moved, so we were able to hire people at a lesser rate than what we had anticipated, we're seeing that decrease across the board. I apologize, some of those numbers shifted there, so I have to look at that, hang on. So basically, how the member contributions are determined is on a five-year rolling average. So we take the average daily membership over five years, and that calculation is put in, which equals out your percentage. I apologize, that slide is all kind of wonky there, I don't know what happened there. But that is how it's, it's been rolled over every single year.
They have it.
Sorry, I apologize. Perfect. So overall, you can see it's a 1.07 decrease for Potts Grove, which is roughly a .0002, I think, decrease to the overall budget to you guys. And finally, again, the Potts Grove School Board has been kind enough to continually approve our budget annually. And I think you're seeing the results in our students, I think, oh my goodness. Mrs. Grimm has a report on some of the award winners from our Skills USA competitions. We have our HOSA competition coming up in, nope, next week, and then our FCC LA State Competition the week after that, and then Hershey States for Skills USA. So our students, while not fighting on the gridiron, are fighting it out in, in convention centers in their, in their duty, in their areas of concentration, so. That's pretty much it from my end on the budget. Questions, comments, or concerns?
I just had one question. The decrease of $15,000, what does that factor in?
So it's based off of the ADM, so we looked at, obviously, last year's budget had, again, we added some staff, and we had some staff that we hired that came in lesser than we budgeted for because a special ed teacher, we didn't know the candidate pool at the time that we were looking at until we had that, so we had to have a number that would be commensurate with someone's abilities walking in the door. So we had some money savings there. Trying to think, also, we had purchased books last year, so we didn't need to purchase books this year, so you're seeing, you're seeing cut, not cuts, but decreases in budget amounts in those ranges, which led to that.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to say shout-out to you because you do a phenomenal job, and I promote you, and everybody knows that I'm a big fan of the Western Center, but you have done it all over there. You do the recruiting, you do the grants, you, and it's all for the kids, it's all for the kids. And you have started, because I remember when you started, to where you are now. I am so proud of you.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'll see you Monday.
And if any of the new board members would like a tour of the Western Center and haven't seen it, let me know, I'm more than happy to oblige and show you all the programs that we have to offer and what your kids are doing, what the students here are doing over at the Western Center, so feel free to get ahold of me and we'll set that up.
I just wanted to say too, the New England dinner that you had, even though it was a bad name for the time that it was.
I couldn't have known that New England, that Philly was going to make the Super Bowl at that time.
But that was one of the best meals I've had in a long time.
Wow, thank you.
It was excellent, it was really, really good.
Both our chefs and our students have done an excellent job in there. This has been our, my goodness, I would have to say 5, 10, 15, so we're looking at 13, 14, 16th sellout in a row. We served over, we are actually over capacity, we actually had people eating in the cafeteria because we had some overflow. We had 225 people in, one of our largest crowds. Two days after that, we had already made 130 reservations for Monday's dinner, so.
That's fantastic.
If you're interested in coming out to the Community Dinner Night buffet, make your reservations for May, there isn't one in April because we have a Skills USA spaghetti dinner, but great opportunity, I think we're doing a Mexican-themed Cinco de Mayo kind of thing, so.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Chris. Moving on to action items for personnel, we're going to start with 6.1, professional staff. I ask the board to approve the professional staff appointment as submitted.
I'm sorry, any questions? Discussion? I was doing my secretary job. Okay.
Yeah, we both. We're good.
Okay, we're all good. Okay, all right, no questions, no discussion? All right, what do I say?
All in favor?
All in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Nope, okay.
Moving on to support staff appointment, 6.2. The district asks the board to approve the support staff appointments as submitted.
Okay, wave a motion and a second, any questions, discussion? No, okay, all in favor? Against?
Moving on to 6.3 supplemental appointments, we ask the board to approve the supplemental appointments as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any questions, comments?
We'd like to make a comment. I actually, I just would like to congratulate Coach Hawthorne, wish he the best of luck, you're going to do a good job, buddy.
That was for, that was for Coach Hawthorne. Okay.
Oh, oh, all in favor?
Moving on, moving on to miscellaneous items for job approval.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? No?
I kind of wish we could have broke this out, I fully support the IST system, IST process. I'll be voting no, not because of the instructional support position, but for Director of Community Relations, I'll be voting no.
Anybody else? All right, all in favor? Opposed?
Okay, moving on to action items for education, conference attendance.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve under action items.
Education 7-1, conference attendance, rule of education, and 7-2, conference attendance for special ed, education hall conference.
7-1 and 7-2?
Correct. Need a second.
Oh, we need a second for that?
Thanks, Scott. I'm going to vote no for 7.1, but yes for 7.2, so.
Yeah, I guess we can't.
No.
Okay.
He can, he can, you know, he can, we can do that in a minute. Laura, you have that. Unless somebody else votes no on something else, we'll record all yes votes for the one and Mr. Parker's vote no on the other.
You're no on the two?
I'm no on one, yes on two.
Did the treasurer step up?
We're good. Okay, so with, with the combination of 7-1 and 7-2, the motions on the floors are second, and we're looking, Mr. Parker has already committed to a no vote on 7-1, but a yes vote on 7-2. Is that correct? So we're looking for, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. So we have a 6-1 and a 7-0. Okay, moving on to 7.3, the high school course proposal, Advanced Placement Capstone. We're asking the board to approve the additional, the addition of new courses for the high school program of study for the 2018-19 school year as submitted.
All right, we have a motion and a second, questions, comments, discussion?
The two courses that we have, I think most of us have gone through the curriculum committee and have had, had discussions on these. Obviously, we have a couple of board members that haven't gone through the actual program. We actually discussed this at length at multiple meetings. This particular course, who I fully support on the course as a whole, it will help develop our students' analytical skills, their speaking skills, their way to analyze multiple complex data and real-time information, and be able to develop things that we don't currently have in place, which is why I think it's a very good course and it's something that a lot of the schools are starting to implement. The only question that I know some board members may have is to whether or not we should count it as a core. All right, I think a lot of the board members feel that it's a course, I'm not saying everybody, but I know a lot of the board members do believe the course as a whole, and whether or not it's continued as a core, as a core. I think everybody got the email from Dr. Shirk and showing a lot of the different schools and how they've handled it. Obviously, different schools handle it differently, some, it's a straight elective, some find it as a core for English, for one or both of the classes. So it's definitely a question on how you guys want to handle that, or how we want to handle this going forward on for the core part. I agree 100 percent with Dr. Shirk, when we go, we do not want to increase any barriers. We want to do as best we can to get as many students the opportunity to take this course. I know it has the AP designation because it's from the AP course, but we do want to try to offer this to as many kids and students as possible. My only, and this is me personally now, this is not anybody, my personal feelings is that I believe 100 percent in if there are students have already gone through the progression of taking AP Language and AP Lit, they've taken every course that we have, our most advanced courses of those two. If they've gone through the normal progression that we would expect on this particular type of course, it would have been either Honors 9 or Intensive 9. 10 would be for AP Lit, I think it's AP Language, one of the two. Then the opposite would be an 11th grade, and then take Seminar as an elective during that 11th year and Research 12, if they're going to do the Capstone diploma. If they decided they're not going to do the Capstone diploma, they still would take Seminar and 12. In that case, they would still fulfill all four years because they would then have taken two, our two most advanced courses, and provided they've passed them both with an 80 or higher, I don't think they would be taking the second course if they didn't, or received a 3 or higher, then I do believe that having that student, instead of sending them off to a Montgomery community, or sending them to an online school, or sending them somewhere, is appropriate for our, we want to try to keep them in-house. We want to do as best we can for what we provide for them. My only issue came up recently when it came to the gifted program being offered as a straight core or receiving principal approval as a straight core. And I mean no disrespect to our principal, which is, he's here, as I'm sure he would definitely, him and the guidance counselor would definitely feed out and look at every particular person and decide if it's the right thing or not. And I don't want to say anything against them, I just don't know if you want to give that as in every parent in the world going to them, and then he has to decide yea or nay on, is it going to be a core for this person, is it going to be a core for that person? You're putting a lot on their shoulders to a point already. I'm sure they wouldn't mind, they would love to have it, and they have no problem with doing it. I do believe they're putting a lot on that shoulders, and then you're going to have parents that are complaining, well, Suzie got it and Johnny didn't. And that, of course, makes me concerned. The same thing with the gifted program, if you allow the gifted program just a straight core, you're going to have multiple people in the class where one person is counting as an English and the other person has to take an English as well. And again, you're going to have people in the community saying, how come Johnny's getting this count as a straight English and Suzie isn't getting it counted as a straight English? Again, that's my only issues with it. I do believe this is a course we should provide our students. I do believe the way they have it listed with allowing it to become a core for anybody that's taken our most advanced courses, and we're only talking of very few people that are going to go through progression. Most of the students going through progression are not going to go 9, 10, 11, 12, straight AP, they're going to go in a different session. That's my personal belief on this particular course. I know Jim has spoken to and has information from one of the professors or teachers or something that actually moderated, that actually deals with the AP teachers and such, and he maybe can, you guys may have seen that, he can also explain that a little bit more.
Do that, if you want, I'm sort of referencing what you said. Dr. Ziegler, have you, I realize it's sort of an event, but have you given any thought to, if a parent does come to you and say, I would like my child to, or the student comes to you and says, I would like to take this and have it count, have you given any thought yet as to what sort of criteria you'd, you know, requirements you would have? I didn't know if you've thought about that yet or not, I mean, I realize it's still next year, but I didn't know if you had given that any thought yet.
Yeah, we would do the same thing, we would do the same thing we do with many courses similar to this, that are the high-achieving courses. We look at the student growth data through MAP, which we now have at the high school. We look at student Keystone scores, which we have, we look at grades, we look at PSAT scores, we really look like culmination of all the student scores. And then we talk about the rigor of the. And then we'd talk about the rigor of the, of the course and ask the student and the parent, have a conversation about, are you ready for the rigor? Do you want to take this rigor on? And what, what pattern of success have you had with this rigor in the past?
If I may add this thought, you triggered a couple of things and then Dr. Ziegler, you know, added to that, to that thought for me. Let's, let's just say a freshman comes in and wants the seminar as a core. At least, okay, so then we would just add the PSA, the PSSA component to that as well as years of MAP. So, we'd have a lot of data. But they'd have to funnel back to AP Language and AP Lit. They're, they're not gonna avoid it, then they're gonna have to like go to 12th grade honors, or excuse me, just 12th grade English. So, even if, even if it would get approved for a freshman, okay, to reach out to different criteria, Mr. Lee, that you mentioned when you started the conversation with all those key components out there as far as the seminar course is concerned, they still have to funnel back. You know, so even if, even if they say, hey, I want to do this my freshman year, they're, they're still gonna have to take our stuff, you know, along the way. You know, I think, I think the recommendation as we, as we work through the process in committee and administratively was, hey, we want, we want our students to be part of the intensive nine, the AP Language and AP Lit, and then jump possibly for that particular student to do, to do the seminar piece. And if there's a student that just has, has the tools to just jump right into AP, Language and AP Lit, then maybe the, in their junior year, they would take the seminar and then the 12th grade, they'd be in research as a, as a possibility, if, if that was something we wanted to grow with at that time. So, I think, I still think we have a lot of options to support our kids. I think you're all on the right track. And I think, I think that we now in Pots Grove, you know, the middle school principal and the high school principal has the tools to make, make, make decisions on that rigor piece for those, for those kids because that date is not gonna, gonna lie. It's gonna give us the true, the true scores that they have for growth as, as, as well as the proficiency and as well as a propensity for where, where they're gonna end up finishing.
And I don't disagree at all, and as I said in multiple times, I think this is a fantastic course and I want. And if you decide that we'll open it up to everybody, then. It's not just the gifted students that can have it as core, everybody gets it as a core. And the English department feels that we can provide the right ELA textbooks, reading, vocabulary, whatever is necessary for it to make its standards, and it's open to all as a core. That's a totally different ballgame. This one only says it's only allowed to be a core for the gifted only. That's exactly what it says. You cannot take it in ninth grade as a core unless you're either in the gifted program.
I thought it was also the principal.
Or principal approval.
Right, I mean, I would say, again, if the goal is to decrease the barriers, you're putting up a very large barrier. You're not decreasing the barrier by not offering it to all students as the core. If it's strong enough to be a core for certain students, then it should be strong enough to be a core for all students.
No, go ahead, well, go ahead.
No, that's, I mean, that's why we have the principal piece. Because again, these are, these are our, you know, what, what this does, how, how I look at the capstone program is this, this is just, this, this adds a comprehensive approach to our AP program that really gives our students an opportunity to have the best of AP. This, this, this is almost, I don't know, it's almost the topping. It's almost the final, you know, whipped cream, if you will, for our AP because we're pretty much maxed out. We've, we've spent the last four years, you know, adding, adding, you know, giving students this opportunity. So, this, this for us is just another way to get opportunity for our kids. I think the elective piece, there are no prerequisites for an elective, you know, as, you know, so, so pretty much it is open to every, anybody, that piece. I think the core piece just has to be vetted out through, through these areas of identification. And I, and I do, I do entrust that our, that our principal, along with the guidance counselor and the teachers, the assistant principals, the, the middle school people that have had, you know, the opportunity to work with these children, they can help us make a good decision whether or not this is gonna be a fit for some kids or not. I, I, I think, I entrust they've done that, they've done that their whole career. So, I feel comfortable with them making those decisions. I don't, I don't think that we're gonna have 90 kids run into Dr. Ziegler for this. I, I, I don't, boy, that would, if we did, that would be, that would be great. Because then we'd be in a whole, whole different, you know, a whole different way of thinking to this and our, and our programming. So, again, I, you know, I think it's a good fit for us, I think it's a good, good timing. And I sort of want to say also, I don't have all the answers to all the questions as you all have been out looking for them, like, we don't have them all. But, but as we go through the scheduling process that the high school's already started, let's see who signs up, let's see who, who wants it for core, let's see who wants it for elective, let's get the teacher on board, let's get that person coached up as far as the, the, the teaching techniques for AP. Let's let it unfold, and you know what? Maybe in the fall, we come back and say, you know what? Here's a couple tweaks, this is what we learned over the summer, this is what we learned from our scheduling, and we can continue to work on, you know, doing this the best we can be. I just don't want to miss the opportunity, you know, for the, both for the course or for, for, for students.
If I can just sort of piggyback off of Jim's email correspondence he had with the moderator. Yeah, go ahead, you, you had the conversation.
The college board website has forums for each and every AP course, and specifically for each course, it's not all grouped together. So, since we were having some questions, I reached out to the moderator for the AP seminar course. And without being biased, simply said, we're looking at adding this, generally everyone likes it, but there's been some question about whether we should have it count as an English language core credit course or as an elective. You've got a lot of experience, you're dealing with schools all over the world, teachers all over the world that are teaching this. What sort of feedback do you have? And she wrote back almost immediately, which is pretty good considering she's in Hong Kong. She wrote back right away saying that she's found that it's the exception to have it as the ELA credit, but schools are doing it. There is a case where there was a college that was pushing back on a high school saying that they didn't count it as an ELA credit, but it was just a single college. She then said that a lot of schools, some schools, they teach it as an elective for social studies. But that it is, there's, it has only been around for four years. So, it's still being sort of, everyone's sort of finding their feet with this. You know, from what she's told us, different people are doing it different ways. And that's actually, I mean, that's part of the problem is, it's only been around, this is the fourth year for the seminar and third year for research, so, you know, everyone's doing it differently. That's one thing we're finding, everyone has it differently. So, I don't know, I mean, she gave some insight that it is an exception to have it the way, but schools are doing it. And so, that's all I can share, so.
If I remember correctly, most schools, if schools are accepting it as a credit, they're accepting it as a general elective, not an ELA credit. Is that what you found, right?
When you're talking about college, not schools, high schools.
Right, right, when they accept the.
Yes, I, I looked up, I just simply went through and tried to look up how our colleges that our students are applying to, not all colleges, I mean, that's up to everybody else. But if you look at Penn State, Temple, University of Pittsburgh, if you look up Montgomery Community, Community College, if you look up Schippenberg, Kutztown, IUP, which are generally the schools that we, most of our students have attended, not one of them will accept it as an, as an English. They will, a lot, some of them, not all, but some of them will accept it as a general education. And it still looks good on their resume, don't get me wrong, the rigor's there. It's an AP level course, so the rigor's there, so it's good to have. It's just not gonna be accepted as an English in college. Again, that doesn't say that they, the students can also take the AP Lit and AP Language and still get the credit. So, I'm not, I'm not saying I knock this course, I'm just, I'm different on the prerequisite, they, how do you count it as a core for certain individuals? That's all, I want to open it up to all or none, you know.
I personally don't feel it should be a core. I, I just don't think it meets the standards, and I worry that if kids do take it as a core and then they go to apply to a college and the college says, well, wait, you don't have enough English language credits. Where does that leave our students? You know, they've done this, this course which has prepared them, but the college is seen in black and white. And you don't have the credits, you don't, you can't apply. And that, that's my worry, and that's sort of what the moderator was saying, was that some of these schools were pushing back.
Yeah, well, one of, that's, sorry, you remind me, what she wrote about was that sometimes the class did not, it did not meet everything for ELA because you need to have additional reading, which it would have if your particular school added that additional reading in. It'd just be a matter of, do you have the time to add it in? So, there again, it becomes up to, you know, the teacher teaching it and the administration to support it, to have that extra reading involved in there to make sure it is for, so.
Dr. Shirk, can you respond to that specific one concern?
I, the, the ELA concern, the, the, the AP piece, I can see colleges not recognize that for credit, for college credit. Like, if you took AP Bio, AP Physics, sometimes they would, they would transfer them for college credit. As long as, as long as we have the seminar as an English course listed in our school profile, and that's, that's, that's one of, that's one of our, and that, that would be from our program of study book, we have what we would count as English courses, that, that, that would be, that would be counted because of the, the existing information that we, we have here. So, I mean, I, I don't think, I don't think that's an issue. I don't think anybody's taking something for nothing. I mean, no, you're not, you're not gonna sign up for this and then not get any value added of it all. So, and I'll just, I'll just take a look at, you know, Dr. Ziegler and Mr. Voorger. I, I don't see that, I don't see that being an issue for us. Dr. Ziegler?
Yeah, a few things. First of all, it's followed by an English certified teacher. It's gonna be placed under our English curriculum in our program of studies. And there are surrounding schools that count this, such as Springfield, that count this as a English core credit. So, the state of Pennsylvania honors this. And this is something, as long as we have a certified English teacher teaching it and it's under the program of studies in the English field, it certainly can be counted as that. The other thing I'd like to point out is that this is, this is a piece, this is a capstone, so it allows our students to be competitive with other schools, you know, other students. And, and one of the things it allows is it allows a student who completes four other APs and these two courses to get an AP diploma. Now, that may not seem like a lot, but what it does is, it's again, another piece in our students being competitive with surrounding schools. For our students to get into schools like Swarthmore or Sinus, Lehigh, Penn, highly competitive, every advantage we can give them is important to do so.
So, Dr. Ziegler, are you saying that, let's say, a science class is taught by a certified English teacher and there's some, and we deem it as an ELA core, then the state will recognize it as an ELA core just because it's taught by a certified English teacher?
No, if it's taught by a certified English teacher, it would be an English course.
But even if it's a science class?
Even if it's a sci, I don't.
I said, you, you said that as long, pretty much regardless of what the content is, as long as it's taught by a certified English teacher and then put in a book as, as a, as an ELA class, that it would be accepted by the state as a certified core ELA? I, I'm just, that's what I heard, maybe I didn't hear.
Yeah, no, let me just clarify for you. So, a teacher that has a certification in English, teaching under the program of studies in the English department with a course that is primarily reading, writing, presentation skills, which are core skills in the Common Core standards for English, when you look at them. Reading, writing, persuasion, presentation, all those things line up perfectly in the Common Core. And when you look at other school districts, other surrounding school districts that do offer this as an English core credit, it is taught by an English certified teacher, it's part of the English program, and it's taught, teaching those skill sets.
Dr. Ziegler, in consideration of how this course is set up and being, you know, who's accepted into the core credit, so we're, in that decision-making, did you consult with your faculty?
We did, yes.
Okay. I guess where I'm struggling is, it seems to me, and maybe I'm wrong, it's just how I'm looking at it, that this is a question of what is academically, what is educationally best for our student population. And it's difficult for me to go against, maybe that sounds odd coming from me, but an academic, purely academic educational decision that our experts that we have here have decided, not just our administrators, but, you know, the teaching staff and those that know our students, know our population, what they're looking for, where they're coming from, the rigor they're used to, et cetera, et cetera. So, based on that, based on, you know, the clear sign that it's something you've considered, you've heard all the arguments that different board, or, you know, thoughts that the different board members have put out there, I'd be hard pressed to go against the recommendation. So, you know, I guess I encourage us, you know, it's a new thing, they're learning, you know, they've researched it. Personally, for myself, I'm gonna support it.
I do have to make sure you understand.
Yes, please.
When it comes to the teachers, all of them are not on board with it being a core. Some of them do not believe it should be core at all, that it will not meet the ELA requirements at all. They are not in agreement, not all of them.
And let me, let me just add, add that, they, they, they all aren't. And the caveat is this, because if you stick to the core, okay, then, then there are some pieces missing. But to me, this is bigger, this is bigger, this is bigger than, than, than several teachers saying it doesn't meet all the criteria. Because what it does is, and Dr. Ziegler eloquently put it, you know, it's reading, it's analyzing, it's research, it's foundations, it's literacy, it's literary philosophical texts, it's listening, I mean, it's a, it's a plethora. So, we could probably go to the core and pick it, pick it out. And I think the concern of the faculty was, they didn't want anybody bypassing them. And, and they didn't want anybody bypassing intensive nine, AP Lit, AP Comp. And I say to, my, 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 my response to that is, probably 90% or more of the kids will not bypass our, our, our courses, our academic courses, our honors courses, our advanced courses, our AP. They're not gonna bypass, okay? This just gives opportunities for those who have the skill set to do that. And, you know, you know, the funny part about it is, and I, I don't know for sure, we might be, it, no one might, no, there might be, no one might not sign up for this as far as a core course. It might be zero. And we might get 15 kids for elective. But if we, if they give our kids an, an opportunity and give us the opportunity to work it out and come back and, 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 you know, specifically work on, on tweaking it, if that's what it needs to be, then I like that opportunity. Because the bottom, the, the other choice is really is to table it and go back and just do more specific research to answer more of your specific questions, and we'll bring it back to you next fall, and we'll put it on the 1920, you know, piece. And I think at this point, you know, there's, there's enough opinions for me to, to warrant that. I would not be, you would not hurt my feelings because obviously, you know, you all have different opinions, and I would rather clear that up so that, that you can make a clear decision and vote on it and what's best for kids. And if you don't think you can do what's best for kids tonight, then I'd rather see it just, let us work on it this spring, and we're not gonna like delay it. We're gonna, you know, we're gonna work on it this spring, come back to you, you know, early in the fall or early, you know, May, June, and say, hey, have this discussion again in committee and bring it back for the board for the following year.
The only thing I, I really would, I'm really hoping that the board can make a decision. I do really believe this is a good course for our students, and I hate to see a year of our students not have the opportunity to take this course. Just to give you the background, just so everybody understands, because we, we discussed this quite in depth for a long time, for many, for a few meetings on this particular course. Originally, it was brought as an elective only. Some members on the committee asked if it could be a core. So, it was not the administration at first. It was a particular member on the committee at the time. It was a particular member on the committee at the time felt Springfield had already had it as a course, maybe we could do it as a core as well. It was brought back to us with, can we discuss it as a core at that time, all right? There was a particular teacher, there was a teach, couple of teachers that are not interested in it being a core, made it a, we came sort of as a committee, as an agreement, as for a compromise, we would do the AP Lit, AP, if you went through those two courses, then it would count as a core. This extra part that gifted student and principal, that's, that came after, after all our discussions. That's the only part. I really would like to offer this students, or this course, even if you took it off as not a core, or you make it as a core, I really would hope that the board can come to a discu- a conclusion on this particular course for our students, because I do believe it's a very good course.
Can I just second something Dr. Ziegler mentioned regarding the top drawer colleges and schools looking at this in a positive way when applications roll around? And that's a time that parents are kind of nervous about right now. But I also think we have to acknowledge that there is a learning curve associated with teaching this kind of course, which is different than the conventional course where the teacher or the professor stands in front of a row of board students and the students take notes. That's, this is a very different type of course. And there's going to be a learning curve, not just for the students, but also for the faculty conducting it. You know, and therefore, I think we've had discussion, and I agree with Dr. Ziegler and Dr. Shirk. I think we've had the discussion, and it's time to move forward. Because next year at this time, if the semester course runs and there's a reasonable enrollment, or even if there's only a small enrollment, and I, I hate to be, to sound like a pessimist, but I'm hoping there's a small enrollment the first time you teach the course, because it makes it a little easier for the people who are learning ropes. But I think it's time for us to move on. We can love this thing to death. We can debate this issue about core, not core, whatever, we can always revisit it. If it turns out that we've decide, let's say, we decide not to be a core course, and after a year of instruction, it says, no, this fits the core, we can go back and modify it and change the decision. That's part of what education is about. You know, if you go to my website, I have first line about a course. A course is a, or a university is a place where people learn. And the second line that I add is it comes as a shock to administrators and to students that teachers are people. And we have to learn too. And our learning is going to be the first group of kids who runs through this course. And they're not going to get the same education that the second year gets.
That's a good point. Can I, can I just ask real quick? The "or have" gifted student identification, is that in any other course prerequisite?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then.
Yeah.
Okay, so I-
So why not here?
Can we, yeah.
And prerequisite take it.
Right, right, but he's asking in, in any other AP, and yes, there is, there's, gifted kids can basically take whatever AP they want.
How it's listed is, is if you're lifted as a gifted, you get to prerequisite the course automatically, you don't have to meet the other requirements.
Right.
There isn't a course that we have, and tell me if I'm wrong, that'll say, if you're gifted, we'll count it as a core course versus not, you get to take it.
There is.
Yeah.
All right. I'll take, I'll take a stat, right? I would like to amend the motion to remove the gifted and, and the principal approval and make it the way originally we had accepted, where it's the AP Language and AP Literature score three or higher in an AP exam in each course, or earned the 80% higher in each course, and then approve the course as that standing. And I have to get a second and all that.
No, but my thought is-
Actually, we need, don't we need a second on the first?
What, oh, no, okay.
We need a second first before we can discuss-
I'll second it so we can discuss it.
Okay.
Sorry, I guess what I was going to say is regardless of whether we amended, oh, yeah, was, yeah. Yeah, but I was going to say, so regardless of whether we amended to have the IQ-
We'll first vote procedurally, I'm sorry, we'll vote first procedurally on the amendment. The amendment will pass or fail depending what happens to the amendment. Then we'll go back to the underlying motion. That's either amended or stands the way it's already been moved and seconded. So I'd suggest you vote on the amendment, so everybody understands the amendment would suj- would change the-
If I, but can I say something that may be to amend the amendment?
Let's first, first vote on the amendment.
Okay, because I-
I've never seen that, an amendment to the amendment, but I-
Can I get, or can I see where my discussion point was?
Go ahead.
The discussion point was that, prior to doing the amendment, was that regardless of how we vote on it, you know, whether core or no core, I, it is, again, like I said, this is the fourth year for it. You know, schools are doing it both ways, so obviously, there's some question as to which is the best way to do it. Regardless of how we vote on it, I think that we should re-look at this next year to say, okay, we've done it as a, uh, now, how do we feel about it? Yes, no, eh, and then go from there, that, that was a-
So your, your point is you would like it understood that it should be revisited lawyer words, direed or tickled for a year from now for Dr. Shirk to bring it back, whichever way it passes.
Yes.
Whichever way it goes.
What were we going to say, do anyway?
We, we, we were, we were doing that, yeah, that, I think that's how it started out.
Either way, you could do that.
Yeah, yes, that, that was, that was, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know.
No, it's-
I have a question on the amendment. So, Dr. Ziegler or Dr. Shirk, if we took that out, would that, you still have the "or receive" principal approval?
No, he was saying with that.
Oh, you want that part out too?
I want the gifted student identification or received principal approval out, because, A, I think, again, I'm always saying my logic behind it. A, I think the gifted student identification is throwing up a barrier to other students that will not have the gifted edu- student identification is, I, I don't see that as a fair, one gets it and one doesn't. Receiving principal approval, the only reason I'm, I'm saying no to that is because I don't believe we even have another elective that can get principal approval for a core course, that I know of. Like you can't take public speaker and say, okay, principals, the principal Ziegler says yes, that's going to count for English. I think this is an exception we're making for this particular course. And I like to have standards across the board.
Yeah, I, I agree with that point. Can somebody respond to that point?
I don't know, if, if I'm wrong.
Because if it's not standard, then-
And again, I, I think we belated this, this point enough. And, and I'd be honest with you, you know, if, if you take out the gifted piece, you don't allow that freedom, so then you're basically, you're going to, you're going to have a, you're going to pigeonhole a gifted student now, and you're okay with doing that. Because, because, because there might be a, a student that has the ability to jump right into AP Language as a freshman, AP Lit as a sophomore, take the seminar as a junior, and finish up with research. You know, and we're not, we're not even at research yet, but, but that, they could, that could be. So, if we, if, so right now, we're saying that we have to jump, if you want, if you want this course for core, then you have to take AP Language and AP Lit. And you also probably then are going to take the ninth grade intensive. So now, we're coming up to the senior year, okay? And the senior year is the only opportunity that this student's going to have. So as far as making this more of an umbrella approach to say, okay, I want seminar, I want research, I want AP Bio, I want AP Chem, Physics, like, it's, you're ju- you're just going to funnel them to a point where they're going to have to make more, more decisions at the end versus having it more open up in the beginning.
I know, you're right, go ahead. Before we start getting into the weeds about barriers and everything like that, we don't know what turnout's going to be.
We don't?
Why don't we just get the train on the tracks and see where we're at from there? We can tweak it, like you said we were going to. We'll know a lot more once we've had to cycle through this. I just don't see a downside to putting it through as it is, that's, you guys vetted it out very well. It's, I think we should just go with it, no tweaking to, you know.
The only thing I wanted to say about that would be, you're doing the same thing to the student that isn't identified as gifted. Are you not?
Right.
Are you not pigeonholing them? I'm asking that as a question. Are you pigeonholing them? To the student that's not listed as gifted, who is very advanced, are you not pigeonholing them too?
Because you have, you have the ability to vet them through the building principal. Because I had one of those guys that wasn't gifted but was talented. So we vetted him through, you know, that process of principal helping us make the decisions. So, that's why, you know, you give the prin- the building principal and his team the opportunity to vet it out on a case-by-case basis. And that, that's not something that, that, I mean, that's been going on for, I mean, ever, as far as, you know, especially since in the times of, of honors and AP that we have today. At Springfield, the principal does that, I did that as a building principal at upper perk, I know Dr. Ziegler does it now. It just gives that autonomy for those special, special cases. So, I don't think that's a bad thing. So.
Would it be possible to vote this through as a purely an elective for the first year, see how it wor- see how it works? And then you guys can come back and say, hey, you know, we, it was very successful, or we need to tweak this and that? I mean, would that make anybody else feel better? I'm still nervous about it being a core. That's, that's my thing, I don't know if anybody else is. And I do want to wrap this up.
Yeah, my, my, I guess my last statement is, and I, and I mentioned this to the, to the Curriculum Committee last week, I would have been happy just not even to bring it here tonight, you know, and just waited, waited on it and continued to, to work on it. Because right now, there's a, there's a motion on the floor, so we basically, you have, you have to vote it down, and then you have to redo it. So, for me, I, I take, I take a look at these things. For me, I'll, I'll self-reflect and say then, I got to do a better job because we missed a vote on this. Because I feel that the educators in the room, the district office administrators, the principal and his team, you know, we, we thought about this for six months. And we, we looked at this program pretty intensely, and we feel, we feel we brought the best, the best decision forward tonight. So, I guess I just want to, I mean, if that's what you want to do.
No, we, we, you know, you can't, you're not, you can't withdraw the motion.
No, I know, no.
So, you can, but we have an amendment on the floor.
Yep, we do.
Let's vote on that, and then we'll find out where we go from there.
Per what Dr. Shirk said, I'd like to amend my motion to only removing the gifted part. Still give the principal the approval, so if he finds that gifted child, or he finds that special child that should go straight through ninth, they're good to go. Give, and I'm, if they find that special, do it. And I really would like to see if we can have this course for the kids.
Can you withdraw your amendment?
I, I draw, can I amend my amendment?
Well, what I'm going to suggest you do is, if you withdraw it, whoever seconded it withdraw their second, then you can make a different amendment.
I withdraw my amendment.
They'll stay with it.
I'm so glad I'm secretary.
Yes, I did.
So you're withdrawing it?
I withdraw it.
I agree.
Can I make a new amended motion to include everything but the gifted student identification to allow the principal to give those special students the opportunity to take this as a core?
I'm afraid, questions or comments? Okay, go ahead. Okay, all in favor? Well, wait, wait.
I don't want to usurp your authority. Does everybody understand where we are, because?
We're voting on the class.
We, we are, we're voting on the amendment.
No, no, first we're voting on the amendment.
Yes.
I'm voting on the class here.
We're not voting on the amendment.
Not yet, we're voting on the amendment.
I don't understand the amendment, but I don't need you, because I'm not voting.
So does everybody understand what you're voting on?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Two.
Charles, where are you at?
I was, I was aye.
He was aye. Right.
One, two, three, four, five, we have five.
Okay, now you have to go back and vote on the motion.
And now, we have to-
As it's now reflected.
And we already had discussion on that, so-
If you understand, then we will come back and make it.
Right, okay, so-
The motion is to accept this class without the gifted student identification.
Correct. Okay, we're all good. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, oppose. All right.
Okay. Thank you. I call that professional collaboration. Okay? Some people have heard that before, so.
All right.
That's all good stuff. Action items regarding policy, we're asking that the Board, eight point one, approve or revise the policies. Please approve or the new slash revised policies as submitted.
Any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second? No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay, committee items. We have, turning to nine point one, the Policy Committee. We ask that the Board accepts the minutes for the Policy Committee, held on January 23rd, 2018, as submitted.
I make a motion to combine all committee meetings into one?
Two or four.
Uh, just, thank, thank you. Yes, correct, nine point one.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Dave, did you get a first on that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Okay, nine point two, operations and facilities. We're asking that Chair to report. That Chair is not here, does anybody from the committee want to say a few words about the meeting on February 13th? Fair enough?
He said we talked mostly about, um-
It's mostly the budget.
Yeah, the budget.
Mr. Nester?
We, we reviewed two items. The first item we talked about, Mr. Cardwell presented a, or reviewed a report, evaluation report received from a structural engineer regarding some, some problems we're experiencing with the pedestrian bridge at the middle school. And we're, it's, it's safe to utilize for pedestrian traffic at this point in time, but repairs need to be made to it. We're soliciting pricing from the, the structural contractor that's going to be doing other work at the middle school this summer. So we're hoping to have something done there. Beyond that, we also spoke, I did the initial presentation for the budget for the 2018-19 school year, and I won't give you a lot of, a lot of the gory details, but our expenditures are projected to rise 1.6 million dollars, which is two and a half percent, which is below our Act One index of 3.2 percent, which the Board, back in November, committed to staying within that as far as tax increases go. The preliminary budget that was presented is coming in with a 1.5% tax increase required to close the gap at this point in time. It is still early in the process, we're going through the, the entire evaluation process that we do every year. Our next meeting for this is going to be on March 13th. We're going to have the department presentations at that Operations and Facilities meeting, so anybody who's interested in hearing more about the budget, please come out to that.
Thank you, Dave. And then that leads us to the Curriculum Integration and Technology Committee. This was held on February 20th, last week. Those minutes are up. Ms. Custer?
Yes. So, the meeting started out with a parent attending the meeting. She had some concerns about the pacing of the new ELA curriculum, or math, math, math. And she was concerned that some of, maybe that the tests were taking too long and that they weren't having enough time to actually learn the material before being tested on it. She, we had a pretty in-depth conversation with her, and I do believe it, it was productive. And then, let's see, oh, she did talk about- Oh, she did talk about, I was right, she talked about ELA. The reading wonder versus, was it RAS? Yeah. And again, she just felt maybe sometimes it was going a little too fast and the tests were taking a little too long. It was a lot, she felt, for a second grade student to have to undertake. We did then go over, Mr. Voorhees and Dr. Ramage covered our ACR data review. We did not make it to the P-Vos or the historically underperforming students, because we didn't have time. And then we talked about the capstone. And that took us quite a while. And because of that, and you guys all heard pretty much what we talked about...
Do it again?
No. Because of that, we did not make it to the last agenda item, which was to go over the new curriculum process for health, science, and... Yeah, foreign language and social studies too, right?
Is it... Social studies isn't this year?
No, not this year, okay. And that was that. So, that's it.
Thank you. Okay.
Oh, what do I do? We need to vote?
No.
I'm confused. New business? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm lost.
You're good.
Okay. Uh, okay. So, does anybody have any new business?
Yes. I want to thank and praise the administration. Had a conversation recently with an acquaintance slash friend, some higher up in, in one of the local police departments that serve us, who really continues to speak very highly of Dr. Shirk and his team in how proactive they have been, not just since the Florida incident, but ongoing. This has been an ongoing concern of mine, and so I kind of touch base with, with the gentleman every now and then. And since Dr. Shirk came on, that has been at the forefront. Safety has been a top concern. So, I just publicly say thank you for that. And I know we continue to look at, you know, we have a safety committee now that has different members on, and we continue to, to refine. It's not an area you want to be reactive to unless you have to. But the more proactive you are, the less reactive you have to be. So, I appreciate that. One question that I have, and I hate to, you know, I'm not trying to micromanage or anything, but it's something I had brought up a couple of years ago with, with the gentleman I'm speaking about. And that is in regards to making our local police departments have the capability to tie into our camera system. I know when I was running New Life, I had cameras put in and was able to see it from my phone and, you know, my laptop at home and so forth. All our, all their cars have laptops in there. You know, it's just one piece of many that I'm sure is being looked at. But it seems to me, being completely non-technical, that with technology now, you know, in place, that maybe that's something simple that can be looked at and considered, maybe more kind of fast-tracked a little bit, just to make that connection. So, that's the only thought I wanted to pass on.
Mason, do you want to go?
So, I just, I wanted, just hearing about the, the Florida incident and how we're looking at safety around the school. I just thought that it would be important just to, you know, get the word out here first. That today we had a productive meeting. It was about the national, yeah, it's national, day of walkout, pretty much. March fourteenth is the day for that. We don't have all the details done, because we talked about it today. Very long meeting, very good meeting, with another meeting at least next week, possibly a couple more. But it's, it's basically just to remember the victims of the tragedy and how we, as students, can use our voice to support change. And, yeah, that's basically it. Yeah, I'll leave it there.
I, I, well put, okay? I mean, really spot, spot on. And I, I appreciate, I did get a chance to debrief with Dr. Ziegler this afternoon. And the, the information he shared with me and the thoughts that you have, I think, I think the, the first round is you've really funneled it to, to what's important. And using this as a teachable, you know, moment, you know, for, for everybody, not just for yourselves, but I think for the whole community. So, I, I look forward to following your progress, you know? And we're here to support, support you, and we're here to keep you safe with that process. And we want to be, you know, we want to collaborate with the student body with this, with this issue. And just, just so you know that you, you have our support, you know, with that. And I think, you know, your focus on remembrance and your focus on the, the prevention pieces. And, you know, colleagues said to me, you know, you know, we need to support change, with some type of change. We don't know what that is, because obviously status quo is not, hasn't, hasn't worked. So, you know, I think as young people today, it's a great challenge. And I think, I think already you've seen nationally how people like yourself, young people like yourself, are making a difference. So, we can learn a lot from you and, and move in this thing forward. So, I appreciate your efforts and look forward to supporting you.
Yeah, I, I really did want to, you know, my brain's, my brain works in a very weird way, and I forget certain things. So, I forgot to thank you guys. There are so many administrators in this country who are pushing back against this day, you know, in schools. My college even emailed me and said, hey, you know, we know that there's a lot of schools that are kind of going against this. And if you're in one of those schools and you want to walk out and you want to have your voice be heard, then go ahead. We won't penalize you. We won't hold it against you, because it's, you know, it's your right to, you know, say what you want and say what you feel and demonstrate. There are, it's actually shocking how many don't support the students. And I just wanted to thank you guys for doing that.
And I appreciate hearing that this is going to be focused around remembrance as well as concern on the national level for change. Not that there's, you know, we're talking about protests and walkouts in regards to issues at the local level, right? So, I certainly, for one, could support that, and perhaps will join you. Being the concern is, you know, saying we need some change nationally.
Okay. All right. And...
We have answers to previous questions. We go back a, a few months with this, but Mr. Nestor is, has put together information regarding the, the question whether to, the structure of the district's transportation program was beneficial to the district. So, Mr. Nestor?
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. Okay, there's a presentation coming up here. Just want to take a, take a moment to, to say that I tried to make this a dual-purpose presentation. I'm going to show you some technology that we have access to, if the board supports it, with some financial analytics that are, we're capable of doing with this product. It's part of my goal for the year to evaluate a couple of analytics tools. There's two, two, two programs that are out, available for, focused on K-12 education analytics. One is called IDEX, which is sponsored by the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators. And the other is called Forecast Five, which is sponsored by the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials. Both similar in cost. The IDEX program has a little bit more academic performance components in it, whereas the Forecast Five is primarily financial in nature. So, I'm going to show you some things that we were able to get relatively quickly out of, out of Forecast Five, because they already have a system built for transportation. So, that being said... Am I on? There we go. Okay, there, there are basically three types of transportation systems in, in Pennsylvania right now. You're either a contracted transportation company or district, or self-operated transportation school district, or Potts Grove. We're kind of a hybrid. But as, as we went, as we went through this, I, a realization came over me, and I'll share it with you when we go through it. But the difference is that we own our buses, we insure our buses, and we contract for everything else. We contract for the repairs, the maintenance, the routing, the administration, the housing of the, of the buses. So, initially, the question was, is purchasing and owning the vehicles by Potts Grove beneficial to the district? And, you know, you would think that'd be a fairly simple question to answer. It wasn't. It wasn't that obvious. So, I took a couple different angles to try and accomplish the, provide the information that I think we need to, to use to evaluate it. So, the first thing I did was I, I drafted a questionnaire, sent it out to all the districts in the county, as well as O-N-J Boyertown. I don't believe I sent it out to Daniel Boone in this, in this instance. But we didn't get responses from all the districts, obviously, but we did get twelve responses. They were all from contracted transportation districts. I asked them to, among, among other things, I asked them what the maximum age of their buses was and what the, the way, the way all the contracts are stated is they provide a per-day, per-bus run cost. So, an AM and a PM run for a bus and how much it costs. And they have a standard rate for every bus that they, they have. And I focused just on buses, not on vans, because there's various, varying sizes of vans, and I didn't want to get too far into the weeds. So, this is just on seventy-two passenger buses. Okay? What we found is the, the comparison group that responded, the, the range of maximum lives is from six to twelve years of age. And the vast majority are currently at ten. There's only one at six and one at twelve. And that's, that's, that's gone up lately over the last few years. Before that, I think it was normal for districts to be at the six-year maximum life, because they didn't want to deal with repairs. They wanted, they wanted the reliability of the buses. They wanted buses on, on the street. Potts Grove's maximum life is fifteen years. So, if you look at the bottom, if you take the average cost of a bus of eighty thousand dollars and amortize that over ten years, which is what everybody else is doing, that, that, that's a cost of eight thousand dollars per year per bus. In Potts Grove's model, it's fifty-three hundred dollars, because we, we hold the buses longer.
Hey, Sid, just a quick question. I know you have questions, just so I can make sure I can follow along. So, when it says other respondents are eighty thousand divided by the ten, so they're buying, they, they're charged a fee of eight thousand dollars per year?
Their contractor is going to build all the costs that they have to have into the, and that's what, just hold on to that thought, okay? But that, but their contractors are going to buy the buses. Or they're going to lease the buses, or whatever they're going to do. But if they're going to, they're going to have the same bus. Right. So, in essence, Potts Grove's holding our vehicles fifty percent longer than everybody else in the county that responded. Okay? So, that means after a period of time, they're going to be replacing their buses much quicker and incurring much more cost. Okay?
So, we don't replace a van until it's fifteen years old? Bus?
Bus.
Bus, bus, what?
Bus. Unless, unless it has an engine or something like that. But that's, that's our, that's our, our plan. The second item was a comparison of cost per run. And when I started looking at this, what I realized is, and Al, you'll probably, you'll probably understand this more clearly than most of the others. We operate our transportation program very similar to a self-insured health insurance program. Okay? We pay the claims, we pay the salaries, we pay the benefits, we pay the repairs, we buy the vehicles. Okay? So, we pay the actual costs, and we pay an admin fee. Everybody else is fully insured. Okay? They have a premium. And that premium has to include the claims, their, their reserves in case you have a bad year, their profit margin, everything. So, what we did was, on those, on all those districts that responded, we gathered their per, their per, per-day costs for their, for their routes. And they ranged between two hundred and twenty-four dollars and three hundred and nineteen dollars. The average being two hundred and seventy-three. We went back and we had, we, we accumulated the cost of all the repairs that we incurred in the last year by bus. We add, we added in administration, we added in, excuse me, depreciation on the vehicles, based on the, the last slide. We added in the storage fee we charged. We added in all the costs. And we came out with ours being two hundred and twenty-six dollars. There was one district lower than us. They're a little bit north of us in the next county. And they were, they're about two dollars, two dollars and twenty-one cents per day cheaper per bus than us. Okay? So, that information probably took two to three weeks to accumulate, pull together, and regurgitate. Okay? We had a, a sales meeting, a demo meeting with Forecast Five, and I knew we were going to be doing, having this conversation. So, I had the conversation with them as to how to go about quantifying costs of, of transportation. And in a half-hour meeting, after they got done selling us the product, they did this for us, and it's pretty slick. So, I just wanted to show you what we got. We have, we asked them to, to do information on two peer groups. One, the peer group one, the larger one on the left, is all of Montgomery County school districts plus O-N-J Boyertown and Daniel Boone. And the peer group on the right is a much smaller group. And that is based on districts across the state that are relatively the same geographic size as us, same square miles, and roughly the same population density as Potts Grove. Okay? So, what we did, we asked them to compare various metrics, because, let's face it, in Montgomery County, some districts travel further, some districts have more kids, some districts have, you know, lots of non-public schools, whatever. So, we wanted to look at a various different means of, of comparing costs in transportation. So, we started out with the cost per approved mile. And I apologize for everybody in the audience. I should have done this on a whiteboard, not on the, on a project, on a screen this morning. On your handout, you'll see that there's a, a number, a lot of lines that looks like spaghetti on there. Each one of those lines represents one of the school districts. And what you will see very easily is that the highlighted yellow line, which is the only one you're seeing in the audience, is Potts Grove School District. And we're very low in the, in the comparison group. We're, we're towards the bottom of that comparison group. The range of cost per mile is two, two dollars and sixty-eight cents to nine dollars and sixteen cents, and we're at three fifty-five. Okay, the slides are, are not, not helping me out here, but... So, when we compared to the smaller peer group, which are the districts of relatively the same size and, and density as us, we're the second lowest. And we'll be the second lowest in all these, all these for the, for the rest of the, the presentation. There's one district in the center of the state that's, does a little bit better than us. Then we looked at cost per vehicle. Again, we're, we're like second or third lowest in the county. With that district that happened to be the lowest on the last slide is, is still lowest for us here. The cost per vehicle, that includes all the, all the, all the cost of transportation divided by the number of vehicles, ranged from thirty-eight thousand, seven seventy-eight to over a hundred and two thousand dollars through the, for the, that peer group. And we're at fifty thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. through that peer group, and we're at $50,495. Again, looking at our peer group, we're the second lowest, still that one district below And finally, we looked at the cost per student transported, and here I'm happy to say we're actually the lowest. Lowest in the county. The range is from $708 to $2,400, and we're the low. And compared to the smaller peer group, we're still second. So the beauty of this information is, it took us about 10 minutes to get it, rather than the three weeks to poll our audience and gather the information. The one thing I want to point out is, this is all data that is public information from, published by the state, based on our transportation information that we submit annually. So every district has requirements, our AFRs for financial data, and mileage and things like that for applying for our state subsidies. So this is, this is about as valid numbers as we can get. The problem with it is, if you look at it, is the highest date is 2015, and that's because Pennsylvania hasn't released 2016 yet. So I think it shows that our transportation system is operating at a very efficient and cost-effective level. And I think this also demonstrates some of the, some of the power of this financial analytics tool. And I can refer you to Bob, Dr. Harney. This also has a lot of power in the area of payroll and salary levels. It can be used very, very effectively in negotiations. There's any number of applications of this, of this software. And, you know, if it's something that the board would like to consider, I'd be happy to bring them out and do a further demonstration for you.
Can I add one thing on the transportation piece? I, I'm through the therapy of it, but I was in charge of transportation for a while in my district. We went through a, an outsourcing that was traumatic. I mean, it is traumatic when you do that. But what, when I came here to find out that you guys owned your buses, the one thing I took from my experience in transportation is when you lose your buses, you lose your leverage. And what we were seeing with the subsequent contracts that were coming up, and take yourself as a transportation, would you rather run a five-year-old bus or a 12-year-old bus? You'd rather run a five-year-old bus. It's going to be, it's going to be on the road longer, it's going to be less repairs for you to make. So the bus, the, most of the districts that outsource, once you don't have the buses, you lose that control and that leverage of owning those buses. And this is a very unique operation, but it's why you're at the lowest ebb of all of those pieces, because you control how long those buses. There's nothing out there that says you have to turn a bus over every six years, but the bus companies are going to want a new bus every six years. It's easier for them to operate that way. It's less repair. And this system is very unique. I was shocked when I heard about it, and I think it's fantastic that you've never lost your leverage, because the leverage of buses, most districts go, oh, we can make X millions of dollars when we turn this over, we're going to sell those. It sounds great up front, you get the money up front, but in the long run, it's not cost-effective like this is. This is, from my opinion, working on the outside, very, very effective in keeping costs down for transportation.
I have two questions. One, how much was the Forecast Five? Just curious.
Seven thousand.
Yeah, I'd be all for that, but that's the board's decision. The cost per run, did the computer system actually break it out as into, oh, there's so many different pieces in there, like the self-insure and stuff like that, did it actually break it out for you? I'm just curious as into, if it was the self-insurance was the huge, yes, that would be a huge.
We're not self-insured. Don't get me wrong.
Fully self-insured.
We're not, we're not self-insured for this at all. I'm just saying it operates like an insurance fund. Where, what we're doing is, we pay for the salaries that CMD pays. We pay for their benefits that they pay. We pay for the repairs that they incur. We don't pay for the risk that the, that CMD is going to take that there might be repairs, okay?
How about the accidents? That's what I'm saying.
We pay for the accidents. We're insured, fully insured for that. But what I'm saying is, when I, I didn't mean to confuse it, I maybe, I obviously did. What I'm saying is, we pay for what we use. We don't pay for what the contractor needs to protect themselves that might happen.
Thanks. Thanks, Dave. And maybe what we can do, since we have seven, maybe we can, if the board would agree tonight to at least let us continue with Forecast Five and then possibly bring it to you for presentation.
I'm curious, does it actually forecast in the future? Is it going to just forecast that?
There are different modules. Certainly, they do have some forecasting ability, but I'm not sure how accurate that portion is, you know, to be honest with you. Because it's a guess. I mean, it really isn't.
I didn't know if they do, based on sort of like the accuracy. What did you think? What did you do with it?
Well, you know, one of, Mr. Nestor, as part of his goals for this year were to look at some analytics for business. So this is what, this, this, this is, you know, Dave's working on his goals, and this was a tool to look at. So, you know, we'd like to at least continue to work with it and possibly, you know, bring it to the board for future recommendation. And I just wanted to see if I could garner some support to keep the ball rolling.
Did you purchase something?
No, not just, I just.
Did you need a head nod?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, just keep it rolling. Keep it rolling. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Keep nodding as you talk.
Thank you. Moving on. To the 2017, 2017, 2018 school calendar, and I'd like Dr. Harney, I know, along to help, his help, along with his office, and I know Child Accounting took a look at some revisions, and I think we've come up with solutions. So I want to turn it over to Dr. Harney with our proposal.
Absolutely. And I want to, Mrs. Bickert was very helpful, too. She was, she did a lot of the analysis for us and came up with some wording for us, too. So what we looked at when we did this was the guarantee that we would have graduation on June 8th. How can we accomplish this with not knowing what the weather's going to be going forward? So we had two snow days that we have to account for already. The first snow day is built into the calendar and is a day that the teachers just need to make up. Right now, that would be on Monday. Last year, we flexed that day. We're still in discussions around possibly just flexing that day with the teachers. We can come up with some things for them to do from a professional development standpoint. And the second day was moving to Friday, the 8th, because our first, seventh was the original last day. So now our last day for all students and graduation is the 8th. So we looked at ways to do that, and the most, the easiest way, and the way that presents itself that many districts do, that we haven't to this point taken advantage of, a lot of the Act 80 days, we are in excess of about 69 hours than where we need to be from the state. So the state is, sets us at 990 hours. That's per public school code 15-1504, and we come in at 1,059. So if you break that out to the allowable hours per day, it's in excess of 11 days, counting those hours. We're obviously not going to look to utilize the 11 days, but what we're presenting to do is, and this doesn't change the calendar in any way, except the fact that we need to retroactively do what I'm going, we're going to suggest, is take some of our staff development days that have already occurred and make them Act 80 days. An Act 80 day is a professional development day that also counts as a student day. And that, the ability to do that, again, is in that 15-1504 that allows us to do that. So we would go back, we have the in-service days already in the books, the board would vote if we need to. We may not have any more snow and not have to do anything. We would be presenting, let's say we had two more snow days, we would present the two in-service days that have passed that we want to now, you consider to make an Act 80 day. Those then don't need to be made up because they're already considered student days. And the teacher calendar doesn't change in that regard either. We talked to the union. They would have to still make up the 11th, 12th, and 13th for the third, fourth, and fifth day, but they would not have students. But because they have a contracted allotment of days that they need to work, they would have to make those up, but students would not. If we got to a sixth day after some sort of blizzard, we would then go to the approved calendar already, which already has us on that Easter Monday, once we get to a sixth snow day using Easter Monday. So the days for the staff don't change. The days for the students will stop up to snow day number five on the 8th. They would add one more on April 2nd if we had a sixth day. So that's, that's the recommendation that we're making to guarantee graduation on the 8th.
So, any questions for Dr. Harney? So then we're looking for a motion to set the 1718 graduation date for Friday, June 8th, 2018.
When you have to have, on this motion, school code requires you have the majority of the board, so we're going to need five votes to adopt the amended calendar.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a second, so I'll second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're all good.
Out of date.
All right. And public comment, correct?
Yep.
All right, is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? Going once, going twice? Sole meeting adjourned.